The Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and videoconferencing. Information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who are closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as--
Recording in progress.
Please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge? You're on mute, yeah.
Talking about that, good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Logue.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Aiken.
Morning.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, the floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on the agenda for nine thirty is a schedule of hearing minutes. Those minutes are from September twelfth, September twenty-first, September twenty-sixth, October seventeen, October twenty-sixth, and October thirty-first, all from two thousand and twenty-three.
May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the extension, scheduled for nine thirty. First, we have case BOA one zero six, six, seven, four, eight, with the address of three eighteen to three twenty E Street. The board originally granted this relief on January twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-one, and the first extension was granted until January twenty-ninth of this year, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the situation to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cazulla, McDermott Quilty Miller, and Hamley in Boston, here on behalf of Jim O'Donoghue and Broadway Land Company, LLC, requesting an additional one-year extension of the zoning relief granted on this project. As Mr. Secretary mentioned, this is the second requested zoning extension on this matter. As far as updates are concerned, since the last extension approval, they are continuing to work towards a building permit, but do need a little more time. They have received BPDA design review stamped plans. Recently, ISD issued them a more information request letter a few weeks ago, on January second, and they're working on this final additional information to complete ISD's building permit plan review. They are working to respond to that more information request letter as soon as possible. So they are nearing building permit eligibility. They hope to have the permit this year. It's very near to issuance of the required building permit to begin construction. So we are respectfully requesting the board's grant of an additional one-year extension with the new expiration date of January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to extend to one twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one zero six, six, seven, three, six, with the address of one to two Church Avenue. The board originally granted this relief on April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and the first extension was granted until April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain?
Yes, good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cazulla, McDermott Quilty Miller, and Hamley in Boston, here on behalf, again, of Jim O'Donoghue, this time with American Boiler and Cooling, again, requesting a one-year extension. This is right around the corner from the one, three eighteen, three twenty E Street. It's the same applicant, same situation. They just need a little more time. They're working with Boston Water and Sore. They have BPDA design review stamp plans. They're hopeful to have a building permit issued again in two thousand and twenty-four. So same request, same situation as the previous request for the same applicant. This one is just an extension till April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. So a little bit further away than the one before. Happy to answer any questions, but very similar to the previous request. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve an extension, one-year extension, until April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Good luck today, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one two six, one nine, two, five, with the address of one fifty Neel Street. The board originally granted this relief on March eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two, and this relief remains valid until March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-six. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board?
Just to confirm, we mean two thousand and twenty-five, correct? I'll be here.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. There might be a typo in that form. Thank you for catching that. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Don Wees. I'm with the law firm of Dean Torby at one seventy-five Federal Street in Boston. With me today is a principal of the developer Hudson Group, known Ron. This is a twenty-two-story, one hundred fifteen-unit project. It will also sponsor the development of the twenty-unit affordable housing project at Chinatown and nineteen Oxford Place, and it's Oxford Place Two, in collaboration with the Chinese Economic Development Council. The project is still working on securing construction financing. It is an ideal renewal project for this blighted site. A beautiful design is bringing activation to the street, ground for a restaurant, much-needed housing. The challenge for this kind of project is a high-rise project on a small floor plate is inherently expensive on a per foot basis. Money has gotten very expensive for construction loans throughout the course of the past year, and we need those conditions to improve for the numbers to come into alignment. The proponent has used their own funds to correct the blighted condition. There's old, dilapidated nightclub at the site for decades. They've gone ahead and taken that down. They've done the site work. They are prepared to go. We are just waiting for the economic conditions around construction line to improve, and then we'll mess with the project.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve-- I need the dates again?
March eleven, two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, March eleven, two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, the second, second, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Next, we have case BOA one two five, eight, six, three, one, with the address of ten twenty-seven to ten twenty-nine Tremont Street. The board originally granted this relief on February eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two, and the relief remains valid until February eleventh of two thousand and twenty-four. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mary Kate Campbell with the law firm Drago in Tuscano on eleven Beacon Street. I'm requesting on behalf of our client the one-year extension. The proponent just needs some extra time to modify and make changes to the structural plans as well as finalize financing. But if this is granted, they are getting pretty close to be able to submit their full permit package.
Okay, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll motion to extend to a year from today. Can you remind me of the date, please, Norman?
It's February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one two eight, five, eight, five, seven, with the address of three sixty-two Weld Street. The board originally granted this relief on March fourth of two thousand and twenty-two, and this relief remains valid until March fourth of two thousand and twenty-four. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Madam Chair, this is Javier. I believe the applicant had a medical emergency, so they're not here right now. The board can decide to defer it till February sixth hearing, or if they believe they have enough information, they can make a motion to approve that says it is a first-time request.
Right, may I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the extension till March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA one zero seven, nine, three, six, four, with the address of six Oakhurst Street. The board originally granted this relief on February twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-one, and the first extension was granted until February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board? Please do so.
You have the raise hand here. I'm just going to do a panelist cam, so if you can unmute yourself once you become a panelist. Hi, can you hear us? Yeah, we can hear you now, go ahead.
My name is Cam Raufi. I'm the owner of six Oakhurst Street. Originally, we experienced some delay for this project due to COVID and the review by BPDA. But then, last year, we realized that the construction cost has increased considerably, so we had to go back and do additional value engineering to make the project feasible. We have made great progress, and we are planning to move forward. We just need some additional time to go through the process.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I do quickly, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Can you just-- did the value engineering change any of the plans that were previously approved? And how are you going to be passing along the savings to the buyers? Just curious how that's memorialized, as you say in your letter?
Sure, so we had to work with a structural engineer to make the design more efficient. And we are-- the units would be, I think the prices are capped by the market price, so we can't really-- what we did, we reduced the project cost to make it more feasible to proceed. I think with the high interest rates, there is the affordability issue, and I think that has put a cap on the prices. So what we worked on toward was to reduce the construction price by making the design more efficient and also do some of the project work off-site to--
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Aiken?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'll motion to extend to February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one one three three, four, nine, nine, with the address of one seventeen Coal Ridge Street. The board originally granted this relief on October eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. This relief remained valid until October eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, which expired. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until October twenty-eighth, until October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. At this point, would the applicant and/or their representative explain the situation to the board?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small of a business dresser fifty-one Dobson Road. We're here seeking a one-year extension to the previously granted relief that the board gave to my applicant, my client. Due to financial constraints with regard to him having to change finances, we are requesting a one-year extension.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll motion to extend again. I just don't have the date, sorry.
October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four?
October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
No, due to the timely nature of the request, untimely nature.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be back.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the board's final opiter hearing, scheduled for nine thirty. We have case BOA one five two, three, two, two, nine, with the address of forty-four to forty-six Winter Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present, will they explain this to the board?
I consider the question unmuted. Can you add this? Or do you have someone else representing you? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike Corey of Madoff &amp; Corey, counsel for the applicant. With me, I have my colleague, Mike Legaro. We, on November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, this board considered an application from our client for a variance to allow a liquor store to be established at this property. The board granted the application unanimously. Subsequently, we found that the address, which was provided by the landlord, was incorrect. They owned the building with addresses forty to forty-six, Winter Street. And we had understood, based on the lease that we had negotiated with the landlord, that the space, the appropriate address, was forty-four to forty-six. After our hearing on November fourteenth, the landlord said, wait a minute, maybe we have this wrong. It's forty-two to forty, and I'm wondering why it goes down, but that's-- we checked the, we checked the assessor's records, and they actually have that address. We were hoping that this board, as a minor modification to its approval, could change the address from the incorrect one that was listed in the application, forty-four to forty-six, to the correct one, forty-two to dash forty, Winter Street. The order hasn't been entered yet. The draft is in there, but we need to fix that.
Okay, questions from-- thank you. Questions from the board? This seems minor enough. If hearing no questions, may I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Now, we will move on to the recommendations from the subcommittee, scheduled for nine thirty. We have case BOA one-- I'll read through the list of recommendation that was made for it and then we'll take a motion on all of them. Case BOA one five two, nine, seven, six, nine, with the address of thirteen oh one to thirteen oh five Boylston Street. The motion was approved with proviso. Next, we have case BOA one five one, nine, nine, four, one, with the address of five, five oh six East Third Street. It was approved with proviso. Then we have case BOA one five zero, one, zero, one, four, with the address of thirty-one, forty-one Washington Street. This case was approved. Next, we have case BOA one five two, seven, one, six, zero, with the address of one eighty to one ninety-four Street. This was approved. We have case BOA one four nine, eight, six, two, five, with the address of four to six Milton Avenue. This was deferred to a full-blown hearing later this month. Then we have case BOA one five two, one, six, nine, three, with the address of eighty-three De Forest Street. This case was approved. Next, we have case BOA one four nine, eight, four, seven, one, with the address of ninety-two Wyndham Road. This case was approved. Finally, we have case BOA one five one, five, zero, nine, three, with the address of-- Finally, we have case BOA 1515093 with the address of 14 Talton Road. This was approved. Those are the, those are the cases from the subcommittee.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve, the subcommittee.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken? Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Before we proceed, I just wanted to remind folks that we have a six-member board and applicants may ask for an administrative deferral if they choose to do so. Mr. Stenbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, moving on to the hearings, scheduled for 9:42 AM. First, we have is case BOA.
Any requests for deferals?
Um, at this time, at this time, for, no, I'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 timeframe.
Mr. Stenbridge, Attorney Richard Lins, good morning. 250 Bremen Street for a deferral.
Is there with me, you got three of them?
Second to last case, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. That would be case BOA 1534938 with the address of 250 Brennan Street. Attorney Lins, if you would explain to the board.
Sure, thank you. Madam Chair, and through to the members of the board, for the record, Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we need to re-notice this matter. We identified the notices having the wrong description. I believe we've already spoken to Javier and the board about getting this re-noticed at a new date from March, I believe.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, March, March 12th would be, be the deferral date.
Okay, great. Uh, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer until March 12th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, see you then.
Thank you very much.
Any other requests for withdrawals or withdrawal from this timeframe?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one raised hand. Lindsay Friedman, I just asked, uh, who, who, who?
Hi, yes, um, good morning. My name is Lindsay Friedman with Immersive Gamebox. We are over at 1260 Boylston Street. We are requesting a deferral to a later date to allow the plans examiner enough time to review. We submitted our revised stamped plans last Thursday.
Okay.
So, so that.
Oh, sorry.
So that would be case BOA 1486245 with the address of 1260 Boylston Street.
Okay.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, the, the new day would be also March 12th, uh, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer until March 12th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Hearing no other request for withdrawals or deferrals, we'll return to case BOA 1547345. The address of 17, oh, sorry, excuse me, 1457 DSW Parkway. This would be for, uh, Ken, this case. Is the applicant and their representative, if you would explain to the board?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I also have a note on here that this might need to be deferred to March 12th for an update or refusal. I don't know if the applicant or representative is here.
Okay, well, it sounds like they're not here, so, uh, why don't we, I'm sorry, Jeff, are you speaking on this, Mr. Hampton?
Yeah, I, I thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I don't want to speak out of turn or for the applicant, but that is indeed the case. The refusal letter had an incorrect violation on it, so they just need to get it corrected.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer this case until March 12th?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Okay.
Next, we have case BOA 1539233 with the address of Inwin Furbush, Furbush Road. Is the applicant and their representative present to explain?
Is Mr. Costa on?
Can you raise your hand if you're on? Don't see the name.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not seeing anyone. I don't have a note for this. If we want to do a second call after the 9:30s, we can.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay.
Moving on then to, um, to the next case we'll defer. So we'll move on to case BOA 1540780 with the address of 32 High Street. Is the applicant, the applicant and their representative present, if they would explain to the board first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary, and good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Matt Echol with Fletcher Tilton with the business address of 100 Franklin Street, on behalf of the applicant. Also on with me this morning is Adam Glassman from GCD Architects, the project architect. What we're seeking to do this morning is to gain approval to renovate the existing structure located at 32 High Street, which you can see there in the front of the picture, including erecting a rear addition and rear decks. We're proposing an addition of approximately nine feet deep by 20 feet wide to the garden level and the first two stories. We're then proposing a rear pullback on the third story, which you can see kind of on the aerial view there, for a third-level deck. This is a three-family, 2,000 zoning sub-district. The majority of the structures are either one, two, or three-family buildings with some multifamily residential sprinkled in. The existing occupancy, we did confirm its occupancy as a single-family with the occupancy committee, and this building will remain a single-family structure. The lot size is 1,400 square feet. In terms of the floor plans, we're proposing the garden level to be finished living space with a family room, office, and one bath. We have a full walkout from that garden level to the backyard. The first floor would contain the kitchen, living room, and a half-bath, as well as a rear deck. Moving up to the second floor, as you can see there, the floor plans, we're proposing two bedrooms and a bathroom. And then the third floor would be a master suite of sorts with a bedroom, bathroom, and a little bonus office space, as well as the, the walkout deck on the third level. In terms of the violations, we were cited for two, both of which are fairly typical in this neighborhood. First is FAR, allowed as a 2.0 with the addition and the finished basement. We're proposing a 2.15. And then secondly, we were cited for side yard. You're required to have two and a half feet. However, as we are a rowhouse-style building, like many of the surrounding buildings, we're proposing to extend the zero lot line on both the left and the right side. With that, I will pause and take any questions that the, the board may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimonies?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Chum Bring with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutis meeting was held at 32 High Street on November 20th. Following that meeting, the applicant continued to meet and correspond with the abutis where concerns. As a result of those meetings, the applicant's made some changes to the plans, including reducing the size of the addition and the deck to increase the rear setback and maintain more of the abutis light, which is one of the major issues that, um, abutis had, had during the, the meeting and throughout the process. Since that time, this office has received no letters in opposition and has received five in support. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you. Madam Chair, have no raised hands? Okay, may I have a motion?
Make a motion for the BPDA designer here.
May I have a second? Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1472285 with the address of 344 Brennan Street. Is the, is the applicant and their representative present, if they would explain to the board first?
Yes, good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Summer Streets, Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Ahmed Mezad. Madam Chair, this is a proposal that was actually originally before the zoning board several years back, where the board had approved a four-story multifamily dwelling on the site. There have been a number of changes in this area, including the flood zone, as well as the coastal flood resiliency overlay district. And we have gone ahead and made some changes to this, to this project. If we can jump down to slide, I believe slide three would probably be, yeah, or slide four, actually. Maybe one more. So what we're seeing here, Madam Chair, is an existing auto repair facility in this section of Bremen Street, which is located just outside the square, has undergone significant transformation for residential mixed-use and multifamily dwellings. Ironically, the auto repair was the norm years ago. There were a number of auto repair facilities along this section of Bremen Street. And certainly, as you can see from the photo, there has been significant development in and around the immediate vicinity. Our proposal, if we want to jump down to slide seven. Our proposal would be for a four-story multifamily dwelling with a total of six units, with parking for six vehicles at the lower level. Again, as I mentioned, this is in a flood zone. We are limited as to the type of uses that would be allowed at ground level. We did consider having some type of commercial retail. Again, this is located very close to the square, where there are a number of retail opportunities already. And we heard that parking certainly would have been a, a more optimal use for this location. This is located directly across from the Bremen Street Park, which is a, an eight-acre open space, as well as about 200 yards from the entrance to the MBTA train station at airport for Brulon. If we want to jump down to the next slide, we can look at the second level. We do have two units per level, ranging in size from about 800, over 800 square feet, up to about 1,000 square feet. We do have an ADA adaptable unit here at level two, which is the unit closest to the front. And then as we go up the building to the third and fourth levels, we have two, again, two levels each. We can probably scroll down to the elevations at slide, uh, we can slide 13. Go back, if we can go back to, yeah, there we go. So we included this slide to show the relationship of the buildings, both left and right. We do have a five-story mixed-use building to our left and a three-and-a-half-story building to our right. And this certainly represent appropriate infill with a transition in height from the corner lot to our right, up to the five-story building to our immediate left. And as you can see, we do pretty much fill out the width of the lot. We do have setbacks at about one foot each on each side. But I would also point out to the board that the existing conditions that sit on the site today with the existing auto repair is that pretty much occupies the entire lot, all the way back to the rear property line. Our proposal would reduce the overall footprint of the building. We would create a 10-foot setback in the rear. And then, as I, as you can see here, go up vertically four stories. I'm sure as the board may be aware, I believe this is the first case, East Boston case, that the board is hearing since the BPDA adopted Planning East Boston on Thursday. We are somewhat in a zoning limbo for the community. Article 53, which was enacted in 1993, is being entirely replaced with the new Planning East Boston recommendations. This area, which is currently under a 3F 2,000 zoning sub-district, would require a number of variances for this project, including the use, the height, FAR, and rear yard setback. However, under EBR 4, which is the new zoning district that is recommended for this area, this use is considered entirely appropriate under, under Planning East Boston, multifamily is permitted. There is no FAR maximum under the proposed zoning recommendations. So therefore, although we are in excess of what the current Article 53 allows for FAR, there is no maximum FAR under the new zoning. And therefore, this would be, again, appropriate from a density standpoint. We do meet the new zoning requirements for off-street parking. Under new zoning for East Boston, it'll be a one-to-one ratio. So we do, we do propose six parking spaces, one for each unit. In addition, the height currently is limited to three stories, 35 feet. And again, under new zoning, EBR 4 would allow for heights of up to 50 feet and four stories. So we believe that while we do require relief under Article 53 currently, that is the East Boston of yesterday. East Boston of tomorrow would certainly find this project generally aligns with the goals and objectives of Planning East Boston. I will pause there to answer any questions of the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, there were comments from the disability commission.
You want to read them? If you're ready.
What they said was that there is no accessible route to the second-floor units, and the proposed lift only, only goes to one unit, leaving two units without access.
Uh, I can, I don't know if our architect is on the call, but I can respond. I did have a chance to review that with the architect. We do show a lift, Unit 201 is an adaptable unit. So we do have the ability to access that, I believe, based upon my conversation with the architect, that is all that is provide, required. And therefore, we do comply with the requirements to meet the accessibility issues or address the accessibility issues for one of those units. So Unit 201, as you can see, is the adaptive unit and does have the lift. That is shown in the garage floor plan as well.
Thank you. Can you address the comments from BPDA around increasing permeable area and reducing lot coverage?
Yeah. Yeah, I did have a chance to speak with the planner from BPDA. And again, I, I think a lot of the recommendations that we will see for the East Boston cases today have taken into account a couple of things. First is the interim planning overlay district that's been in place for over four years in East Boston. My understanding that has expired. So a lot of the recommendations that we do see on the East Boston cases today do reference the iPod. However, the iPod being expired based upon the adopted recommendations for Planning East Boston would, would certainly be relevant to the conversations for today's cases. As for the permeability and the open space on the site, as I mentioned, the current, the current auto repair occupancy that is at the site occupies approx, almost 100% of the site today. We do increase the, the lock, or decrease the lock cover to the building itself. One thing I would point out to the board, and this is certainly important as we move forward with new cases, especially where there are existing buildings on sites. Planning East Boston does recognize that where there are existing conditions, especially those that are non-conforming, those will no longer, well, they'll be pre-existing non-conforming structures. However, new zoning under Planning East Boston will allow for vertical additions, including dimensional non-conformities, provided they are within the height limit. So in this particular case, under new zoning, even though we started this process a while ago, we would have the option to maintain the existing garage and erect a vertical addition three stories above, provided that we're under the allowable height limit of 50 feet. That would result in a. Uh, that would result in a, you know, a setback that is almost at zero in the rear yard, uh, as well as no permeability at all. Uh, our proposal demolishes the existing structure and then rebuilds it, and does create a setback in the rear of about ten feet, uh, which also adds to some, uh, permeability on the site as well. So that's a condition that we do actually, um, improve upon based upon this proposal.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, Madam Chair, um, and it's for Attorney Lins, as well as maybe, um, Mr. Hampton from the BPDA. So, the, um, I, I guess, if this was as right under the, the new EBR four, uh, you know, the, the garage obviously sort of consumed the whole first floor, and not only takes the existing building, which had the garage on one side, it now makes the garage kind of the dominant feature of the building, both the garage entry and the entire first-floor use. Uh, so if it doesn't come through the board, is there still any design review that would occur, uh, as a right with the BPDA to kind of look at some of those features? Uh, because I don't know that aesthetically, that those are the most pleasing things that are intended to be the outcome of the new zoning.
I can, I can try to answer from my perspective. I think, um, through the chair, Mr. Aiken, the, the current plan, because we have not, um, achieved zoning commission approval for Planning East Boston yet, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, we're still somewhat in limbo. So we are operating under current Article fifty-three, and therefore, because relief is still technically necessary, we would, uh, be subject to design review. I think going forward, uh, if there are as-of-right, um, conditions, um, those will depend upon whether or not we're in the neighborhood design overlay district, uh, or there are other, some other reason for design review, whether it's Article eighty or some other type of trigger. Uh, for most as-of-right projects, however, uh, once we are out of the iPod, uh, I do not believe there's any elements for design review, and Mr. Hampton can certainly clarify that, if it's a strictly as-of-right project that does not fall under any, uh, neighborhood design overlay guidelines.
Yeah, I, I can confirm that, Mr. Aiken. I mean, if it's an as-of-right project, there's, you know, you would imagine that when somebody is redeveloping a site, you know, no matter who it is, they were going to improve what is already existing. However, you know, as Attorney Lins has stated, if it's, if it is indeed an as-of-right project, um, I don't think we'd see it.
Okay, thanks for confirming.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Malvia Gomez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. OMS hosted an abutters' meeting for this project on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. One abutter was present on the call. The applicant also met with the Jeffrey's Point Neighborhood Association, and the group voted ten in favor and eight opposed to the project. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Ground Law Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parra from Counselor Coletti's office. The counsel would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, have no raised hands? Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Are we including G-Cod Javier as a separate, uh?
Uh, yeah, you can, uh, make a motion to approve for G-Cod and do it all in under one, one motion.
Alright, motion to prove and motion for, to approve G-Cod.
May I have a second?
Uh, second.
All right, Madam Chair, is that with BPD design review?
Ms. Panado?
Uh, yes, let's add BPD design review.
Thank you. Uh, who seconded? Are you?
Yeah, I am, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Are we checking back on, uh, Furb-, Furbush, eighty-one Furbush?
Eighty-one Furbush Road. Um, if there is anyone present to represent their case?
Okay, Javier, did you, what, what date did you say to extend?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't see them on, it, it's up to the board. They did not communicate or let us know, so if the board wants to defer it, it could be March twenty-sixth, but the board has the option to deny without prejudice as well.
Uh, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer until March twenty-sixth.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
There are also votes yes, motion carries.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I apologize. We'll need to take a break at this moment for the next case. Uh, there was some advertising issues for this one, so we'll have to reconvene at eleven AM.
Okay, I will see everyone at eleven.